United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a minute here, a couple minutes for comments and concerns. Anybody like to address the board at this point? This is a young lady right here.
My name is Deborah Walden. I live on South Street in Warren. I just want to bring something to your attention. I have nothing personally against any of you or professionally. You're doing okay for the town. My husband works for a company, Portland Vale. It's a company that moved down from Portland, Maine, located in the Warren Pump Shop Plaza there, whatever you want to call that building. I understand that they had a contract with the town that they had to hire thirty to thirty-five people with the stipulation of getting a one point five six million dollar tax incentive over a five-year period if they hired people within town. Am I correct on this? Well, they only hired four, okay? Two were from town, which just got laid off, which was one by husband, who January seventeenth was discharged from his job. The one was from Munson and one was from Springfield, and the other guy was from town. As I'm concerned, they broke their agreement with the town. Has anybody ever followed up on this contract with the town? That they fulfilled their obligation? Can anybody answer me?
I can't say that we, that the board has. We've never had a complaint before.
But I, as I recall it, I thought the agreement was they would, if their plans, if they completed their plans, they could possibly hire up to thirty people. I don't think they give us an honest, a thing they would hire thirty, like immediately.
They didn't hire thirty to thirty-five people, which is in the article dated September the thirtieth of two thousand and eleven by Mr. Delansky saying it was a no-brainer for the town for them to come down here and to hire those people from town, which they didn't do.
Oh, I absolutely know. One of the things we said when we were talking about with, with the particular industry that you're talking about, that they guaranteed us that absolute preference would be given to the town resident for any, any openings that happened. I absolutely agree with you on that.
Well, I know if I broke a contract, I will be penalized. So, I don't know if somebody can look into this and see where it stands?
We will look into it.
I absolutely agree.
I lost everything. It was the only source of income from my family, and I lost health insurance. We lost everything.
Could we do this?
Now, do you have any reports that they've hired anybody from out of town?
Yes, they have hired out of town, Munson, Springfield. And those people are still employed there. They let, they let go the ones from town.
They let go the ones from town?
Yes, sir. My husband's being one of them, January seventeenth.
Could we do this? Let's, Lorraine, let's send a letter to the particular industry that they're talking about and request for an update as far as who was, who was hired under that condition that we had there? How many people were from town? How many people remaining from town? And if anybody from town was let go, the reason why?
And it's only the Portland Vale, it's a unit of Colfax.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
It has nothing to do with the Warren Pump Shop. I don't want anybody to get mad at me saying I'm jeopardizing their jobs from being here because I was threatened for me, for coming here to talk to you about this.
Oh, that's ridiculous.
Now, do you have something on this?
Yeah, I'd just, to add, the town did enter into a twenty-year tax increment financing agreement with Colfax. They agreed to hire thirty-five full-time employees in return for that TIF, twenty-five of which were supposed to go to Warren residents. Now, every year they're supposed to file a report with the state and with the town that shows how they are in compliance with that agreement. So, I think you could request a copy of that report if you haven't gotten it. And if it's, if the state deems that they are not in compliance, they can pull that approval and eliminate the, the tax benefits that the company has received. So, there is recourse here.
Absolutely.
If you find they are not in compliance, you can certainly take action if you deem it appropriate.
Absolutely.
Do you know the CEO over there now or who else?
No, I, no.
Well, we, we have her on record, but...
Let's, let's, let's do this. Pull the contract, Lorraine. Give a copy to each member of the board of selectmen, number one. Number two, send a letter to the, to the company saying that we're requesting the information that was agreed upon when the contract was signed with an update as to every part of what they're supposed to be giving us. And tell them that we will get back to them once we receive that, and we'll get back to you too.
I mean, one point five six million dollar ten, tax incentive, that's just crazy. That's money we could be getting in.
But we will definitely see. I don't disagree. I think we're going to see if they follow through on their part, and we'll go from there. We will get the information, and we definitely...
Could I get an answer?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, comments and concerns? This, no, you, you first. Go ahead.
Ladies first. Is there any good news about Comcast and us getting our Springfield channels back?
Mr. Delansky's got some news tonight that just come by.
Comcast requested through the cable advisory committee to meet with a member of the board of selectmen and a member from, from that advisory committee. That meeting will take place on Friday at one-thirty, and nobody, I don't know what they're asking for, and Igor doesn't know what they're wanting to discuss. We will definitely let you know right after that meeting as to where it stands. Other than that, we heard, we had a request, and I think it came through, Lorraine, to get, and get an updated copy of what our requests were and so forth, and we have heard nothing since then. This is the first time we've actually had any contact since then. I will definitely let you know after the Friday meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Is that meeting open to the public?
Uh, it is not going to be held on place. I can't say that, baby. I don't know. I don't know. I didn't set the meeting up.
It's not our meeting.
So, I, I have no idea at this time.
Anyone else, comments and concerns?
Sure.
Yes. Hi there, Michael Morrell from Archvision Warren. First thing I have for the board is I actually would like to submit a board of selectmen agenda request for the next meeting, so I'd like to put it addressed to you, Mr. Chairman, so that I can give that to the... It's not for this meeting, it's for something in the future, either the next one after or the one after that. The other thing I'd like to discuss, just give a quick second here, is on my agenda for the next meeting was, on that list was, public records requests and Warren Community Action, Access TV Channel Twelve with Igor. One of the things that I did just want to note to the board at this moment is, was an issue, an ongoing issue that has been going on for a couple weeks with a public records request to the Warren Police Department. Basically, the only thing I'm going to quickly say about this is that I was asking for some records, and I was told by the chief of police it was one thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars. I received a letter just certified in the mail from the chief the other day. The price changed again, and it was mailed to the wrong address, not the address that I put on my paperwork. So, that is, basically, the chief and I are not in agreement to the pricing that he came up with, and he's not able to prove some things. So, I escalated that to the state agency and filed a complaint to check into that. And then the very last thing I'd like to discuss briefly...
Michael, before you go on, you did ask for five years of records?
It was for four or five years of some records, yes. But, but the answer to your question, is I also got a year and a half of time sheets and it cost me ninety-six dollars. It didn't cost me anywhere near one thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars.
The tax is fine.
Right, right. And then the only last thing I'd like to say briefly is...
Michael.
Yes.
Go ahead, have a seat.
Oh, all right.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Basically, I, I just wanted to just speak briefly about an issue that, that I had, nothing really bad. I was down at the Warren Senior Center helping Mr. Brian Corville with some signatures on a petition, and there was a gentleman that had approached me, who was giving me a hard time, basically. And what happened was is I was sitting there with the petition, and this gentleman came up to me and says, oh, what do you have there? And I showed him the paperwork. And he basically got very upset and says, you can't stand on the sidewalk. One, it's a public sidewalk. Anybody's allowed to...
Would you address the board, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Address the board.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure the people behind me can hear.
Yeah, well, I hope they can hear. Can you all hear?
Yeah.
I can't hear him. He turned you all away.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so I'll speak a little louder. So anyhow, so this gentleman approached me and said that I can't stand in front of the sidewalk, and he said, well, you're in front of the post office. And I said, well, want to have permission from the post office to stand here? And he said, that doesn't make a difference, you're in front of a federal building. And he says, you have to be a hundred feet away. So, he says, you need to move a hundred feet away. And he, so I says, okay. And I says, well, it's not what the law is that I read. It's a public sidewalk, anybody can stand on it. And anybody has the right to freedom of speech, to hold up a sign, ask anybody a question. So, it turns out that the gentleman says, well, I'm going to call the police on you for standing on the sidewalk. So, I said, fine. So, he kind of paced back and forth and this and that, and then he went around the corner, and he says, well, you're not leaving, I'm going to call the police. And I just said, well, I'm not moving. So, he made it look like he was on his cellphone, you know, attempting to push one button at a time, trying to convince me to leave. And, so after that was going on, he went down the sidewalk, and I got a picture of that person here, yeah, he was on his cellphone pretending to call the police. So, a lady came up to me and says, and says, oh, is that guy bothering you? And I said, well, not really. He says, he just says he's going to call the police on me for standing on the sidewalk, which is the most funniest thing I've ever heard. So, it turns out that a lady whispered in my ear that the person was Steven Delansky that was bothering me. So, here's the picture I, so, so I just wanted to understand, so here's the picture I took of him pretending to call the police on me, and then here's another close-up shot of him...
Will you serve me that?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Just to do what we're...
I can't see what you're talking about.
You're out of order, Brian. All right?
What am I, a machine?
So, so, so here's where this is at. So, so this has nothing to do with Mr. David Delansky, and I'll say that right up front. I did see you, Mr. Delansky, while I was at the post office. You were very professional. You just said hi to each other, and that was it. So, as far as Steven, he had bothered me a few more times and was in the area about twenty minutes, and he was telling other people like he was calling the police and to have me arrested. So, twenty-five minutes went by, the police never came, nothing ever happened, and I never heard of such a thing of a citizen saying, hey, you can't stand in the sidewalk, that's a public sidewalk that anybody can stand on. You know, if the police did come, they, they, they come in and say, okay, you're standing on a public sidewalk, that's not illegal, so...
I, I think, is that the whole gist here, what you're trying to tell us?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then, so, so what I, so what I've done is I had actually called the, the Worcester Office of the ACLU, the American Civil Liberties Union, and I described to them the situation of this thing, because it turns out Steven Delansky, and on my piece of paper, was David Delansky. So, that is why he flipped out when he saw his, your brother was, saw his brother's name on that form. And he continued to harass me three or four times in coming back and forth to me. He didn't touch me, we didn't touch each other, but he just said, he says, I'm going to have you arrested if you don't move. So, he wanted me to move a hundred feet down the street, then it went to a thousand feet down the street, and then he said, I want you to go, then he told me, I want you to go two thousand feet down the street and around the corner past the senior center. And I just said, well, it's, I says, well, I'm not going to move, I have the right to stand here on the sidewalk. So, so I, I took pictures of him, I took, I used my cellphone, took a video and, with audio and video of him. And, so, so the situation is this. So, after speaking to the ACLU office in Worcester, I says, you know, I felt that he violated my civil rights of standing on the sidewalk, and who is he to tell me that I'm going to be arrested for standing in front of the, and standing in front of the, on the public sidewalk, not on the post office property? So, at this point in time, I'm not interested because I feel that all of you, including Mr. David Delansky, are respectable people, and I'm not interested in filing a complaint against his brother. So, what I would like to do, Mr. Delansky, if this seems fair to you, would be to talk to your brother and see if he would be willing to come to the next meeting and offer me an apology. And that's all I'm asking for. I'm not, I have nothing against your family, nothing against you, but if somebody else came up to me, and if anybody here who has a right to speak to stand on the sidewalk has no right for somebody else to come to say...
All right, I'm not interrupting him.
Let him go, please.
So, so that's all. So, I, so I'm not upset at him, I don't hate him, I don't even know him, other than the citizen said that's, that's him, and that explains why he acted that way when he says, hey, what do you got? And I showed him the petition, and he says, oh my God, that's, and he stopped, so, that's all. So, that's what I'd like to do for that, is if he's willing to come here and offer me an apology in front of everybody, that would be acceptable to me, because I, because I could file a complaint with the ACLU for an investigation, you know, charging him with a civil rights complaint of violating our rights standing on the sidewalk. And I prefer not to do that. I just prefer to be professional and just want an apology, and I feel that that's fair.
Okay. First of all, I knew that that happened.
Yes.
Second of all, if you called the police department, five minutes after he talked to you, okay? I told him he was wrong. I called the police department, five minutes after any call was made, and told them to disregard anything that was said, and that as far as I'm concerned, I don't care, you have the right to be there. It should be in the records, I made sure it was called, and I made sure to tell, to tell the police department to disregard anything that was said. So, I agree with you, you have the right to stand there if people, if the owner of the property doesn't mind. And I also told him that, let it alone, and I called the police department to tell, to tell them absolutely, positively disregard anything. And I know it's in the records because I asked him to put it there. So, that's, that's my part of it.
Okay. So, so just so I understand, so you called the police department and said disregard the complaint that he had called in?
I told him to disregard any complaint that came in pertaining to anybody standing on the sidewalk. That's what I asked, that's what I told him to do.
Okay, so he did call the police, and then you took care of the police not coming?
Well, I wouldn't take care of the police not coming. I don't think they're coming anyway. I told them, don't do it.
Okay. Okay. I appreciate you being honest and doing that. Thank you.
I just don't, wasn't, you can't do that.
Right, I said, like I said, you know, I want to make it clear, no issues against you and I, because you saw me there, I said hi to you, you didn't bother me in any way, and I was just more upset. And what I think in my personal opinion, so is that he, he did this on his own, it wasn't that you told him to do it to bother me or whatever, it was just...
All right. You know, we each get five minutes.
No, I understand. So, that's the last thing I want.
Do you have any other subject?
Oh, no.
No, I want to add one thing, and this is one I wanted to cut to the chase, okay?
Yeah, whatever.
We've got a busy night tonight, and you were being repetitive there, you were repeating yourself. But he, and myself, could not tell Steve to come here and to make a public apology. We don't have the authority for him. You have a civil suit. If you want to pursue that, you have that right to do so.
Right.
But I was going to tell you, well, Mr. Delansky, that is a public building, you have no problem standing in front of that. Many people have stood there and politics and all, you know? But Mr. Delansky said he took care of his brother, informed him properly. I think he was thinking of the senior center, myself, is what the instructions...
I don't know, I didn't ask that much.
That's a voting.
Well, that's why I wanted to shake his hand, because he basically understood that the situation that was happening is not right, and who was wrong, and that he rectified it. And I very appreciate that. Thank you.
You all set?
That's all.
Now, folks, before we go any farther...
Thank you very much.
Yep.
When I was watching this gentleman here, I forgot to make a public appointment, announcement against the onset of this meeting, and that's to notify you, seeing both video and audio tape. I think most of you know that, that's the habit here. But also, in accordance with the new laws, I have to ask if anybody in this audience is video or tape it. This gentleman right here is, he has a camera over there. I just wanted to inform the rest of you that he has a camera. Anybody else in here? Want to declare anything?
I have a phone, but it's not on.
You have a what?
I have my cellphone with video and everything.
You have a cellphone? Are you, you're recording?
No.
No, it's just...
All right, okay. Thanks very much.
Only if we need to know.
All right. Brian?
While he was talking, I just want to say that if he does want to apologize, he can apologize to me and this young lady right here, because we would just be very respectful at the, the following week at the...
Brian, did you hear what I just said?
I understand.
We can't tell him that.
I'm just saying, he harassed her and myself, that's all I'm saying. If he wants to apologize, he can apologize to himself, sir.
Yeah, Saturday morning in front of the post office, I'm sorry, the gentleman, he walked by six times, intimidating us, harassing us, yelling at us, calling us losers, get out of there, whoever he was. I didn't know who he was, but he walked by within a foot, and he came pretty close, actually. He's lucky I didn't call the police, what I'm thinking about.
Okay, I think we've heard enough on that.
Thank you.
All right? Okay, anybody else got anything, comments and concerns? Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Correspondence, Mr. Labash, please? Oh, well, we're past seven fifteen, seven fifteen, we, a lot of time for you, Mr. Fountain, you're on now.
Mr. Scanlon.
Oh, Joe Scanlon, sorry. We're late for a book.
Good evening.
Good evening, Bill.
I have three items that I wanted to talk to you about, one is a solar farm at the landfill.
Bill, I noticed people on the, would you come over and sit at that table right there and talk to us, so everybody out there can hear you?
Thank you. Thank you. Phil Scanlon, Town Planner? There were three items I wanted to talk to you about, solar farm at the landfill, economic opportunity area designation for the right mill, and then the third item would be an energy grant for the town. Do you have any preference of which one to take first?
No, you can take whatever you're ready to do.
Okay, for the landfill, I met with the Board of Health on the possibility of establishing a solar farm on top of a closed and capped landfill on South Street. And talking with the EP officials, they agree that that site would be suitable. And many communities have done this, they have leased space on the, on their landfills for private developers to construct their solar farms. And the town would benefit from leasing that property, which, as you know, is currently not used because it's capped. And they can also enter into a power purchase agreement, which gives the town credits on its energy bill and has economic value. I did work with the town of Brookfield on a solar project. That project is now up and running. And over that twenty-year period of the agreement, the town expects to receive about eight hundred thousand dollars of value for that lease. So, what I would like to ask the board is permission to go ahead and issue a request for proposals to solicit interest by private solar companies to develop a solar farm on the landfill. And part of that process would be to receive proposals and evaluate them in terms of which proposal gave the town the best benefit. And then if this board agreed, we would enter into the appropriate legal documents to execute that kind of an agreement. I did meet with the Board of Health a couple weeks ago, and they were supportive of the idea. But this is a town property and stuff for the board of selectmen to authorize.
Continue on that, right.
So, I just want here tonight to see if you have an opinion, and if you would allow me to go ahead and, and work on that.
Okay, I've briefed the board on this before. Do you have any questions, David?
My question is this, and is there any cost to the town at this stage?
The only cost I could think of is if you wanted to have council review, I've put together the request for proposals. If you felt it would be wise, we could send it to council for maybe an hour or so of their review. I don't think it's really necessary, but if it made you feel more comfortable, you could do that. We would receive proposals, I would like to have some assistance in reviewing the proposals. So, at some point, we might want to create a volunteer committee to help with that process. And then there might be a cost in terms of evaluating the proposals by somebody who's an expert in that area to make sure that we're, we're doing the right thing. And then legal costs in terms of go through the lease and the power purchase agreement. So, there would be some costs down the road, they'd be minimal at, at the beginning.
Have you talked to the planning board about this?
Yes.
And what, what's the planning board have to say?
The planning board was supportive. They asked, they authorized my, using my time to prepare the application for the request for proposals, and the Board of Health sent a letter to the board saying that they supported that as well. So, I hope the Board of Health and the planning board are on record as supporting this activity so far.
I have no more questions.
Mr. Labash?
I'm awesome. Deborah, send that.
That?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Gary Odi. A good question, what happens after twenty years? I, I don't understand that. It's good for twenty years, but then what happens after twenty years?
Well, two things could happen. It could stay. If it's still producing power and it still makes sense, then it could stay in the town, it could renegotiate an agreement. Those solar farms do lose efficiency over time, so it won't be producing as much twenty years in the future as it would be today. The other option is to require the owner to remove it.
At what, whose cost? On the owner's?
At the owner's cost, right. So, the, there would be a company that would own the solar farm, not the town. The town would just lease the land.
I couldn't ever understand. Thank you very much.
Okay, do you want to give him the, go ahead? I personally, hey, I fought to do this, but we're doing everything we can to, to cut the town's cost and run in any kind of waste disposal maintenance and, and years of policing conditions at the landfill. This is a golden opportunity to do it.
No more questions.
You want to talk now?
Well, I just want to ask a question.
All right, go ahead.
Our, our board actually brought that up a little while ago, about possibility of doing a solar farm on the, on the landfill.
Which board? Our board?
The Citizens Action Committee, right. We brought that up, I think we actually gave you something in regards to that. But anyhow, before you spend money to do that, I was checking with the solar company that's doing the one up on Little Restaurant right now?
Well, that's what he needs, because they're in town now, and we're trying to get them proposals. They want to know what we've got, look at the property.
Right, I'm working with them day in and day out. I'm just saying, right now, there's not a bunch of, no more permits being issued. They have to wait for the second round. So, they're aware that the town of Warren wants to talk to you about that.
Well, where were the monies that's still available out there, Jim?
I'm just saying, before you spend money for it...
And we've been talking to this with DEP a long time ago, years, two, three years ago. And when we closed our landfill, this is what we were going, look at, to cover the maintenance costs of that building, so...
I, I agree, I think it's a great idea. I'm just saying, before you spend money to do all sorts of...
We're not spending any money, if you just listen.
All right, go ahead.
We're not spending any money. This is to find out if, anybody's interested, seriously interested, all right? And it's best to do this while we got somebody right here in town, because to bring in somebody from Maine or something else would cost us, all right? That's what we're hurrying, hurrying about here. At this point, all we're doing is looking at the possibility, that's all. At this point, all we're doing is looking at the possibility, that's all.
I think it's a good idea, but I just have one question for Bill. How long would the permit, they're going to legislate more permits, et cetera? I mean, how long do you think you could accomplish this? I mean, the town needs something quickly, not five years.
You know what, I don't want to lose, and I don't want to be a little
I just have one question, how long does he take?
But plan. This is his time to talk. He wants to prevent this from happening. If he gets done in his time slot here, maybe we'll have some time for questioning, all right? Please bear with me. There is protocol, you know? It's not a community
Well, we can stay five minutes later, but whatever.
I guess my question to Bill would be this. Can you get a hold of the current solar company that's here right now?
Sure.
Find out what they're saying? Just, I think it's a good idea to at least check into it, to check into it. And I have no problem if you can come up with an answer as far as how far out we're looking to reach to do this. I think that's a good question.
Okay.
That's the two things I'd like to say.
Do we have consensus of the board for him to pursue that aspect?
I do.
Okay, if we have a consensus, go ahead. All right, let me answer one question back there, because I see concern in his face. The 20 years, I've been reading a lot on this, and there's been some people who worried about at the end of 20 years, unless you get it in the contract, these guys are free to walk away and leave the town or whoever they build these things, with all the problem of getting rid of this stuff. But Bill, we learned some things about this, and that would definitely be in a contract to take care of that, remove it or otherwise, at the end of 20 years. If they just want to walk away, that ain't going to be the case, all right? We'll cover that aspect, all right?
Please. Okay, the second item, sort of following up on the discussion we had earlier on the tax increment financing situation at the local park. What I would like to do is get your permission to prepare an application to designate the right mill as an economic opportunity area. Now, that is not actually applying for a TIF, for any particular company. But that designation would allow the town
For show of funding?
To offer tax increment financing deals to people who might be interested in locating at the mill. So there are three steps. One is designation of an economic target area. And Warren is already designated as such. That's why we could do it at the Warren. The second is what I'm asking for tonight is designating that site as a location where the town can offer a TIF. And then the third step would be when a real company comes in and asks for the TIF. So there's nothing on the table for that yet. But I think this is important because it's a very high priority for the town to develop the right mill. And this would be one tool that the town could offer people who might be interested, who are looking for space. And they might be swayed to go to another town where they could get a TIF. And if they feel they can't get one in Warren, they might walk away and go somewhere else. So it's just more of a, maybe a marketing tool that says, okay, if you come to this particular site in Warren, you could apply to the town for a TIF, and then it would be up to this board to decide whether that were in the town's best interest.
Right, now, I'd like to settle, I know the question is, you are, all of the, you are working with the planning board members on this. They know everything that you're telling us.
Yes.
Right, you're not working separate from the planning board at all, right? This one squared out away, all right? Okay. All right, do you need another consensus?
Yes, I do.
Let me ask this question. If by doing this, are we tying the town into anything long range? If we decide, let's say that the TIF that we had, we end up saying something, there's a problem here. I don't want to go through that again. If we designate as a possible target area, okay, does that tie us into anything in the future?
Well, no, it doesn't tie you into anything. It just gives you the ability to offer a TIF or to negotiate a TIF with another company. But you're not tied to doing that by designating this as an economic opportunity area.
So if a company were to come up and they want to move in there, we're not obligate them at that point?
No.
I just want to make sure, there's no ties.
There is, you can negotiate that, agree to it or not, depending on
It just says we could if we wanted to?
Correct.
Okay.
We have the, we have the building. We've learned a lot, and I know Bill learned a lot from other towns that have already gone through this, and we've learned some things the hard way. So I think we got him an advantage here. Okay, can we give him a consensus?
I have no problem with it, based on those conditions.
Okay.
That's right.
All right, we have the consensus on item two, all right?
The third item was a grant from the Department of Energy Resources. They have funds to hire energy managers. So an energy manager would be a person who would look at the town's energy use, would survey towns' municipal buildings, and would identify measures the town would take to save energy. Now, under this particular program, they're offering funds for two years. In the first year, the state would pay 90% of the cost, and the town would pay 10%. Of that 10%, 5% could be in-kind services, and 5% would be cash. There is an ability for up to three towns to jointly apply for, to hire one person. My thought is, for a town the size of Warren, you would need a full-time energy manager. You could hook up with two other towns. Now, the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission has offered to write this application on the town he has. And they would find two other towns that would be interested. So just to give you an idea of some numbers, if this person earned $50,000 a year, and it was split three ways, that'd be roughly $17,000 per town. 10% of that is $1,700, of which $850 would have to be cash the first year. And maybe there's a way for C M R P C to cover that town's dollar cost. The second year, the state will cut back on their contribution and ask the town to pay more. So the first year is fairly easy. Second year gets a little tougher. My estimate is that the state might pay $35,000 of that cost, leaving about $15,000 for the three towns to make up. Split three ways, that's about $5,000 per town the second year. So the reason that you might want to do that is you might feel that the town would save at least $5,000 through energy conservation measures and through the services that this person would offer. So there's no cost to write the application. C M R P C would be willing to do that. But there would be a matching requirement in the second year. And then after that, the state is looking for towns to pick up the full cost of that person. Now, they can't guarantee that you would do that, and you can't speak to a board two years down the road. But I think they would like to get some interest in your thought that, yes, you think it's a good idea, and that you would try to do that a couple of years from now. So I didn't know whether you were interested in taking advantage of that or whether you felt that the match would be too difficult to come up with.
I'll give you my personal view first, and I'll let the other member speak. We've had some bad experiences with the state on these deals. They start these and impose them until, then they back away. I'm very skeptical about it myself. Now, unless I knew specifically where we had something in that area, where I knew a guy like that could come in here and save us a bundle that first year, I'd be well to take a pass on that myself. How do you feel?
Well, the town has some buildings that, I think, are probably using more energy than they should. So I think there's probably ways that you could do at least some low-cost energy conservation measures to save some of that money. Then eventually, you're going to get into more expense, replacing windows or heating systems. So there could be some real expenses, but, you know, obviously, conservation pays for itself over time. And it would be up to you to decide whether you wanted to take those more expensive measures later.
All right, I'll give you my position in a nutshell, okay? Not that I'm closed on that, but I'll argue to Mr. La Bash. You got any ideas?
I always kind of wonder that, to be exact. Replacing lights and windows and conserving energy. What are they going to be doing next year? I mean, what are they going to continue to do? There's going to be that much to do to continue to do it for years.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question. We'd be talking about a third of a person, a third full-time equivalent person. So I think the first couple of years, it'd be a fair amount of work to do. Depends on what you authorize them to do. If you wanted to get into some serious building renovation work, that could keep a person pretty busy for a while. But if you didn't want to make those expenses, then there might not be that much for that person to do in year three.
But I mean, that's a good thing with having my head, is what are they going to do in year three and year four?
Well, there's another thing. They come up with the ideas, that's cost money. Then you got to do something. I don't see this town having money to do anything in that respect for the next few years. I think we're going to look at the most serious time in front of us. I think two or three years, maybe more. So, you know, I don't see, we're lucky to maintain what we got right now, I think. David?
Couple things. First of all, I'm reading an energy managers grant thing. Says deadline's February 14. The odds are, it's going to be tough to do that. But I think the $50,000 is a false figure. It doesn't recruit retirement. It doesn't recruit town insurance or anything like that. And I get back to the same question I asked the last time when this came before. Let's say we get in with three towns. Now, we're guaranteeing, well, tell me in the state that we're going to try to fund it after they stop paying for it. What if, and I guess I got to go with my what-if question. What if Warren is, and I'm not saying we would be, but what if Warren says, yeah, we're going to do that? And what if one of the other two towns backs out and says, no, we're done? Does that mean Warren now becomes responsible for paying the whole thing, or two-thirds of it, or whatever the case may be? We've been burnt so many times with states saying, we're going to do this and we're going to do that. My all-time favorite one is regional school busing. If you regionalize, we're going to give you 100% of regional school busing. Not going to cost you a cent. Whatever, you know, about 45%? I think the most I remember being is 65%. Once, we did get 100 once. Right now, we're ridiculous. I mean, part of the problems we have now, we wouldn't have if they were paying the money that they were supposed to be paying towards regional school. And likewise, we're supposed to be getting X amount of dollars from fixing up roads and everything else, while Warren used to get 400 and something thousand. We're now getting 200 and something thousand because we're still paying for the big dig in Boston, which seems to be continuously having problems. Unless somebody can prove to me that this is, this is good for the town, and we'd be able to do it, I wouldn't do it.
I can't give you those guarantees of, you know, it's not my program, so.
No, and I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying, I don't trust the state.
I'm a valid concern. I can try to work it out, but I can't guarantee what the answer is.
I just think it'll end up costing Warren a lot more money in the future if we decide to do that, which we're trying not to do.
Two out of three ain't bad, Bill. All right?
Yep, okay.
So you ought to be happy, but the first two shouldn't be costing us any money. And that's, you know, you got the green light to go ahead there. Appreciate you coming tonight, thank you very much, Bill. Okay, Mr. Stone, I apologize, we've run over your time. But hey, I think he was worth hearing.
Well, first of all, I've only got a couple of things, and I want to turn it over to Louise. But first of all, I want to set the record straight for everybody that we are not, as a group Citizens Action Committee, in any type of, we're not involved at all in the recall. We're not involved at all in supporting anybody that's running for election or lawsuits or anything of the kind. We are not involved in that one bit at all. We want to set ourselves aside from all of that.
I happen to be part of the committee, and I did the recall, so that's baloney.
You're not, not this board, this board This board did not get involved in that one bit.
Am I part of that C A C committee?
You're part of the committee, but that's not part of the committee's work.
One equals two, one and one equals two.
We're not part of the committee, we're not part of any of those actions. So I just want to set that aside, I want to make sure that's understood by everybody, because I don't want to be accused of anything. Our board should not be accused of anything like that, because we're not involved in any of that. The other thing that, well, I guess that's it, go ahead.
Well, let me ask you something. Is there anybody out there other than, who is your spokesman? Who is your spokesman? Right now, you've got a few going around, climbing the base, you're spokesman. Who is the spokesman for that committee?
There's two or three of us. As far as spokesmen, no.
You?
No, I do mostly speaking for the board. If there's anything, if somebody, you know, when we ask questions and stuff, it's more than likely coming from our committee that I formulate and give to you. But the thing, don't be offended when we're asking you questions.
We're not being offended, we're not offended, we're working too.
You do get offended, I'm not, we're not looking to argue with people, we're just asking about questions. And that should be our right to ask questions.
You have that right. And I don't think you've met with any negativity on that aspect, have you?
No, but I hear different things that the board is taking offense to us, asking questions. If we're not asking, we're not asking for this.
Take offense to people coming in there and saying, I'm a member of this committee and want to do this, okay? Now, you haven't designated to this board, who's your spokesman?
I'll be the
And I think you should do that in writing. You should have, you should have officers. And who has the authority of that committee to speak and make official requests for that committee?
I do all the requesting. If there's anything else that I'm not aware of, you
Am I asking too much?
No.
I think if he was sitting here, he would ask the same thing.
Any request, I put my name behind it and as the board also.
All right, thank you, okay.
I'm speaking tonight.
Come on up here. Want to sit over here?
Sure.
Sit over here, so the whole of you, if I can see you, share your thoughts with you.
This will be great. First, I want to thank you for responding to our letter. We received it today. And we understand about the tax rate. There's not too much you can do about it right now, because it was voted on. But hopefully, next year, we can all work together and maybe lower the tax rate.
Absolutely.
The second thing is the town plan a position. You had offered to meet with us, maybe, and go over your revisions, and maybe some recommendations. And we're very interested in doing that. So when you get ready, if you could contact Jim, maybe one or two of us would
We do, we've already committed to you on that. But let me answer to that, is the planning board is working on the write-up. And we'd have had them here tonight if they had it done, but they don't have it done. And I don't know when, David, that's his, he's the point man on that. What's the latest on it, David?
I talked to the planning board, they're still looking at it. I told the planning board that they submitted, please submit it to the board of selectmen. The board of selectmen, in the last meeting we came to, I think Jimmy was there, I don't remember if you were there or not. The board of selectmen at that meeting with the planning board, when they were discussing it, has committed to your committee that we will happily show copies of that change. If there's any changes, if there's no changes, we will show you copies of that job description. We'll let you people go over it, and we will happily go into, get into discussion with it. You have our word on that, and you will still get it, I promise.
Great, thanks. And the third thing on the tax title properties, you mentioned here that you're thinking about maybe having something in a spring for some auctions, so the sooner the better, get some more revenue into the town. My only question is, is there any kind of standard operating procedure in writing on how all that is handled? You know, when something first comes, the town knows that a property is going to be either condemned or taken away for tax title. Is there a SOP that you have on exactly what you do? You know, the different steps?
I know it's expensive and it's lengthy, and let me offer first. This state, one thing it does is put everything in the way of anybody trying to take somebody's property, okay? Whether it's in tax title, it's tax-deficient or not. The state fights it right to the house, without the owner even being aware of it. It's a very timely, and it's got our treasurer, he's going crazy with it. But who's the point, aren't you the point man on this? You want to talk to it, David?
The treasurer actually had probably, was looking into, as we said at a town meeting, way back. We're going to, was going to take a group of properties and going to try to put that all under an auctioneer or whatever it might be, and try to take all those properties and to sell them at one time. Treasurer looked more and more into what the problem became, is if something didn't sell, we still had to pay the auctioneer's price on it. So let's say, if, I'm not sure what the percentage was, Louise, but if a house was there for, right, for $50,000 or something like that, and it didn't sell, we still had to pay the auctioneer how much you're, how much he would have gotten for it if we sold it? We're going through more, we're not going through, the treasurer is going through more plans now, and his intention still is to get rid of the property that we can get rid of, without incurring more costs for the town of Warren. If we're going to go out and try to get rid of a property, we want to make sure we're going to get the money for it, not have to pay if it didn't sell. So he's looking more into that. I don't think we have a SOP on it, but you know what? Let's request from the town treasurer, in writing, how he goes about deciding what gets what. Billy is the one that would know. And we will happily ask that question and give you the information.
Right now, we have an auctioneer looking at them already. We put a package together once. We went around looking at the properties. The ones that are in, had enough shape that he doesn't even figure it going to sell, we're going to try and take out of that package. Because like David said, it costs us, if that doesn't sell, it's costing us $400 a piece. We're going to try and put better ones in the package. And he's formulating a whole package of how they put it together and how they advertise it, and who it goes to, and see what happens.
There's some nice land that we're looking at the list, too. And some of it goes back
Certainly is.
To the 50s and 60s. And, I mean, if people aren't going to pay their taxes on it or something after that many years.
The other thing, like they were saying, it takes so long. By the time the tax collector even turns it over to the treasurer, that they're so far in debt that they walk away from the building. And then, after we do take time on it, we have to sit for a year before we can do anything, in case they decide, six months down the road, that a relative wants to come and pay the taxes off and own the landfill. So if you sell it within that year, they can take it right back. So there's another year, and it's all waiting right there.
Well, do you think Mr. Slushstein needs help? Because we had talked to some other towns, and it could take anywhere from just, well, just three to four years just three to four years to get everything from start to finish. And it seems like it takes us an awful long time, a lot more than three or four years.
Well, let me tell you what my, the treasurer tells me, okay? First of all, our treasurer is not a designated for real estate disposal period. You know, his first job is treasurer of our town, watching over safeguard and investing our monies. And that's what his number one priority, whatever little time he's got left over. And he don't work just here. His job is he's part-time somewhere else, you know? He works two jobs, but he don't work full-time for the town. But anyway, we don't have a person that's dedicated strictly to tax title property. That's where one of the things. He gives it attention when he has time to take the attention, but he's not the main holder, believe me. Titles, lawyers, tax titles, the lawyers eat up time. Now what towns are you talking to?
Oh, what towns do we look into? Was it Palmer?
Palmer's one. Sturbridge was another one.
Yeah.
Well, I've gone to where, and I've gone to a few other towns around here. They have the same problem we do. They can't afford because property, not that much property, you know, these small towns, it gets in a tax title usually. What we've got right now is a rare thing, Bill tells me. He's never seen a lot of properties and it's increasing on a daily basis.
There is a lot, but a lot of it is super, super-
Now, maybe what this board needs to do is collectively, similar to Bill, and talk to him and see if it's time maybe pay. If the cost is such, maybe in the time he just don't have it to pursue this, maybe we should be talking and getting somebody in here to do just real estate.
Or an assistant.
I don't know. That's my personal thinking.
That's what I had, maybe an assistant.
But I talked to Bill today and tried to get him up and he was beside himself because he was having a bad day with investments. And when he, he takes everything so hard here. There's days that you can't talk to the man because they, but that's, the town comes first to him, you know?
And I will say one thing. Well, we did an auction, I don't remember how far back, maybe five, six or seven years ago. And we sold all the properties that were on, that we wanted to get rid of. In two or three occasions, we, believe it or not, the people bid on it and they ever came in to pay. So it's still some of the, some of the property that's on the list still goes, a lot of it goes back because we actually had it sold, we thought once, and didn't get the money. If we, if we auction it, they come forward and they, and they bid on it and then they have to come out and get the money. And I won't get into which pieces of property, but I can tell you about two or three off the top of my head. But the, the idea the town wants to do is to get rid of those.
Are you willing to give up your time to make your time back in?
I'll leave you one second.
Yep.
I, I've gone to a lot of house auctions and they make you bring a check with you. So you don't walk away without paying for it before you-
Well, we're around five and ten, you're about ten, you probably seen five and ten years ago, Jimmy.
Right. Yeah, now, now it is different. I, I agree. Bill's doing a great job and I think, you know, you're probably stretching him as hard as you can. Maybe it is time to get some help for it.
Well, we're close to something. Now, there's one house on South Street, it's going to go up to Auctionbury, but it, the guy's, the guy is living in the building and his mother wants it via the auction. She intends to buy it because she thinks she can get it cheaper at auction than she could coming in and paying the taxes, all right? And maybe so, the way things go, but hey, so be it. All right? That's another thing we deal with, you know?
What's scary, we'll bring it next week and we'll pack it up front.
And if Bill, if we'll talk to Bill, if Bill needs help, we have no problem getting it for him.
Right, you know?
Because once you get rid of them, then you can probably handle it just with one person, if one or two come up.
Well, like I say, you wouldn't believe the ones that are coming on though. It's just amazing on a daily basis, daily basis. Wouldn't be able to talk to by the bank, you know?
All right, well, I'm-
Anything else?
I'm all set.
Anything else?
We will get a hold of your committee as soon as we have that job description.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
And also, before annual town meeting, we're going to probably ask everybody to come in that we can possibly get in here to decide what we can do with the tax rate. The tax rate right now is the most important thing for the board of selectmen that we're looking in to try to solve.
I know you've got all the boards leveled, but one thing we're going to look at is anybody that's asking for more. We'd just like to get involved in why they're asking for more.
We have no problem with that.
Well, you know, we told, we told you a couple of town meetings ago, we're at the point of cutting, or hey, the next thing is services. The town's got to decide what services they want to maintain and keep and finance, but we got services. Hey, we got Cadillac services in our town in some areas, but hey, people are very reluctant to give them up. But if you're going to cut costs, it's like your household, you know? If you've got to cut costs, you can't be too sentimental about this. You've got to be able to go back, back. And I think, let me tell you something. We have a real estate expert in the house here, but I, I, from the people I've talked to, I'm surprised we can see a free fall in real estate values like we haven't seen in ages. Stop thinking about, huh?
So values are going up?
They're going up. Well, not the people I'm talking to. So now we got the sheriff, right? Well, stop thinking about it.
It's a buyer's market.
All right, I got you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, folks, for coming in.
This ties into that, I know, like, the town has expenses on a weekly basis. And if we can save money in some areas, we can, we can do stuff like maybe, you know, into that, but I got one like last week that went through twenty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars to a professional service for a selectman downtown design.
By what?
Selecting downtown design professional services, twenty-six thousand, four-
That's our engineering. We're doing, we're committed to downtown renovation and modernization.
My question is, what kind of a design is worth twenty-six thousand dollars?
Spending, oh, hey, it's a massive, go ahead, you want to-
Is it made out of gold? What is it?
It's a, roughly a four million, four million dollar design from Central Mass Metropolitan Planning Organization and CMRPC. They're going to, you know how they did one side of the downtown Warren with the, with the-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're going to do the other side. They're going to do some work. They're going to tar all the way, on sixty-seven, the parts of sixty-seven that haven't been tarred yet and the sidewalks and everything in downtown West Warren, that's what it's for.
My question is, what kind of, I don't care if it's a ten million dollar project, what kind of a design is worth twenty-six thousand dollars before even, before even anybody lifts a hammer?
It's, it's actually more than that.
There we go.
Back, back at town meeting, there was a lot of money-
Don't answer. That money can go back into the general fund, correct?
No.
If, if we don't, if we have to spend every penny of that money, is that correct?
All right, come on, you been, you go to all the town meetings? You go to all the town meetings?
Well, I was in mid-sentence with Mr. Delansky, but-
What?
If, if something doesn't get spent, it would go back to, to free cash at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
The amount would be welcome. If indeed nothing, if something gets spent or there's money left over in any account that you have, as long as it's not a article and under, now, on the omnibus budget, any money that's left in any of those articles goes to free cash at the end of the year, automatically. If there was an article, let's say there was an article to-
So we don't have to spend every penny?
Oh, no. No, no, no.
So he's wrong.
Well-
He was wrong. He was just saying that we had to, we couldn't do that.
Well, it depends on what it is.
It's an article. It's that article we voted at the-
If it was an article, a separate article.
That was voted.
Okay, separate article at town meeting.
Okay, but you're saying out of the four million dollar project, you're saying if we-
Well, we're not paying, we're not paying for the project.
I understand, but it's a grant or whatever, correct?
That's, it's-
If we don't spend, if say we spend three thousand, does the other, I mean, three million, does the other million dollars go back into the town?
Depends who paid it. If it's, if it's being paid by-
Well, that's what I'm asking. Who, who's paying?
Well, the, the money for the, to fix the downtown Warren and the money to do sixty-seven is part of the transportation improvement program that's done by the state and Central Mass regional planning. That's not our money. If there's anything saved there, it goes back to the state. Our money would be, anything in the omnibus budget would go back to the town. If a warrant article is put on there for X amount of dollars for engineering services, if there's anything left in that article at the end, it can be turned over by who's in charge of the article.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, we have to really be tight on this. It's taxpayers, I know it's grant money, but it's still the taxpayers. And, you know, I just, I don't understand what kind of design costs twenty-six thousand dollars. I just don't get it.
Most designs, to be perfectly honest with you, most designs, a design for sixty-seven or a design for downtown costs hundreds of thousands of dollars.
It's ridiculous in my opinion. I mean, I just don't-
All right, you've used your time, a long time ago.
Okay, there's a lot of ways to save money, that's all I'm saying.
I absolutely agree with you. We're going to try to do whatever we can.
All right. Thanks again, folks. You're about, you're welcome to stay. We're going on, take care of town business here, all right? Contact with, contract with Connecticut Radio Incorporated. This is for the fire department radio system and tenant pages. The selectmen's going to sign that contract tonight. I entertain a motion to do so.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any discussion at all? Carry none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's see, I think that's in this book here, am I right? Okay, David, I'm going to have to, I'm going to, that's the only one of them there, right? Lorena?
No.
Did we overlook you?
No.
No, okay.
I let you know.
All right, thank you.
Two green, two signatures required.
Don't forget, we didn't do correspondence yet, too.
You got what?
We didn't do correspondence yet either.
Oh, yeah, go back to that. Mr. Delash, when you get done with that, we're going to go back and do the correspondence, which we did. Carry-
Michael?
Yes?
The lady left her coat.
Okay, she's coming right back.
Okay, correspondence. Any new of the town resident regarding, regarding, disgarding furniture along the roadside of Brookfield Road? What if any action could be taken? All right, let me answer that. We've asked a road surveyor. It's a matter of policy. He's to survey these dead end roads and things. Anything he sees thrown out, he should be picking up, okay? I think we've got to renew that request, Lorena. You agree, Mr. Delansky?
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Mr. Delash? But, you know, evidently, but, you know, I'd like to appeal to the public, we've done this before, but, you know, the situation seems to be, we need everybody in town to keep an eye on those, these rascals who's driving down these isolated roads and things and dumping stuff and making off. Here again, this costs money. This is one of the reasons our, our road crews constantly asking in here, coming in and asking for more money because it's not in their budget. How much did they ask for to increase their budget so far this year? Picking up stuff.
Budgets haven't come in yet.
No? All right. Well, anyway, they always complain to us. But if everybody keep their eyes open, there's cars that's not recognized in certain areas, take plate numbers. We just caught one by one of the residents taking a plate number, you know, and we're making inroads on this thing. But we get somebody and make it a good example, we'll cut this cost. But hey, we're asking everybody out there, if you see any indication of anybody doing this, take note of it. Try to get a description of the automobile, the cars, the trucks, whatever. Call the police department, tell them what you've seen. It'd be helpful in cutting our costs and picking up this roadside waste. And let me tell you, it's becoming an epidemic, all right? All right, thank you.
I knew it seemed like it was helpful there. You might have said, "Go." Airman Miranda from Chief Spelowski seeking the board to consider a mutual aid agreement with the city of Worcester, drafted by the city of Worcester and the Mass Chiefs Police Association. The agreement will allow officers to retain police powers while transporting prisoners to and from court as well as to and from a hospital within the city limits.
All right, with the board's approval, this document came in late today. I didn't have time to read it. I don't, Mr. Delansky, you told me you did, you did. I'm going to table this until we've all had time to read this for a better discussion maybe, and I have the police chief here to explain why you want to do this, all right? So will you notify the police chief? You can put this on the agenda for the next meeting, request TP here somewhere close to seven. We'll, we'll do this very first thing, get him out of here, all right? Go ahead, Mr. Del-
Correspondents from the Warren, Warren District advising there is a misappropriation of the FY 2014 hydrant assessment fee increase. That was effective July 1st, 2013. The quarter commissioners seek a review of the matter and request that we expect to make the necessary adjustments.
I don't know what to, what do we do? Do we know any central partial?
No, I think probably what it was is they've either fighting us on the amount of hydrants or they're fighting us on the amount we pay per-
Do we need more information?
Have we got that here, Loren?
The whole document?
Mr. Delansky, look at the next section, agenda.
I'm in the agenda.
agenda items?
Oh, sorry, correspondence.
Okay, all right.
That's what I'm-
My apologies.
No, no problem.
Well, we got a member of the board right here with us. Can you explain it to us, Bob?
I don't really want to, I'm trying to stay out of this one because I'm on board of the-
I know you are, but I mean, with your inside information, what is the problem?
It was an increase in the, in the fee of the hydrant level. And according to the treasurer, they didn't appropriate enough money in the budget originally.
Okay, well, we'll have to look at this. I don't know if we voted to cover it or not. I'll have to check it out. If we didn't, we'll have to put it on the agenda to correct it at the annual meeting.
Yeah, we can't-
The line item hasn't sufficient money.
We can't do anything right now.
We can't do anything, no. All right, we'll look into it.
Have to be at the special. And the question becomes is, is-
Lorena, will you remind me to look into this tomorrow? Okay, pass that back to her. Proceeding, Mr. Delash.
I give you a written complaint from surrounding community resident regarding customer service at the West Warren Library.
All right, that's a lengthy-
Long handwritten letter. Can we send a letter to the person that made the complaint and explain to her that the, both the Warren Library and the West Warren Library are semi-independent in nature and belong to the subscribers at the library and the board of selectmen has no control, no control over either library. And it would be the board of library commissioners. The letter should go to them and we will forward the letter to them.
Okay, we have some informational information there you want to read, the-
Yeah, a memorandum from Melanie Smith of Educius International, reaching out to our community in hopes of finding host families for a few international students attending Wake Park High School. Information and contact information can be found in the selectmen's office.
Can we put that on the Table TV access channel?
All right.
Igor says it's running right now.
Is it on there now? Okay, then we got everything covered.
And a memorandum from the town clerk and voting the board members that department, staff member, Deputy Casey, Lacy O'Officer, give you these-
Phil Perdoo.
Yeah, same for you. Have worked together diligently to issue non-crime violations and update undog licensed dogs, collecting about fifty-three hundred dollars in fees and successfully been collected to date.
That's a record.
That's very good.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, we ought to, we ought to, I think we ought to send a letter to both of those people, thanking them for their efforts and their improved corrections.
Absolutely.
Uh, ratio, okay?
And correspondence from MSBA informing the select board that they have voted to approve the proposed accelerated repair project, group project for the path by the regional vocational technical school district. The district will have ninety days to acquire and certify local approval for the appropriation.
What's the date of that letter, anyway? Do you know?
The MSBA letter?
Yeah. Did it tell you when they voted on it, that the-
They voted on the twenty-ninth.
So ninety, so we have ninety days.
Ninety days in March.
March, April, okay, that's fine. Make sure-
It's after our account.
Put an article in the second town meeting for that and we have, we sent copy of that to the finance committee?
Did you get a copy of that, too?
Not yet.
Yeah, a second, a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Make a motion we accept warrant number eighty, in the amount of five hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second.
We got a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion we accept warrant number eighty-one, in the amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second.
We got a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion we accept warrant number eighty-one, in the amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second.
We got a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion we accept warrant number eighty-one, in the amount of five hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second.
We got a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion we accept warrant number eighty-one, in the amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second.
We got a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion we accept warrant number eighty-one, in the amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second.
We got a motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion we accept warrant number eighty-two, in the amount of sixty-two thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety-one cents, and ninety-nine cents.
Second.
We got a motion, the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have, okay, uh, Minister of Assistant Report, Lorena, you're up, you got anything?
Just a few items, gentlemen, just a quick news release to, uh, for town residents. The town moderator is still seeking to fill two openings on the capital planning committee and one opening on the finance committee. Letters of interest can be directed to the town monitor, moderator, excuse me, Davis Selectman's office.
Lorena, double check with the, with the moderator, please, before you put anything on about the two openings on capital planning. I think they've been filled.
Who fills them? The moderator?
Moderator does. I think both of them have been filled.
Well, it's on the, it's on the blue screen upstairs, I know that, I saw it this morning.
I think they were filled last week.
Okay. Good. Okay, what else?
With regards to the senior abatement program, the office has received thirteen valid applications. They're seeking the board's opinion on the quantity and approval.
I would move that we grant the thirteen applicants the right to have the senior abatement program.
Okay, I got a motion, second?
Second.
Got a motion, second, any discussion? Anybody's wondering what the senior abatement program is? It's a set of money we set aside for seniors who are experiencing financial difficulties to work for the town, and they can work off up to a certain amount of dollars off their tax breaks, okay?
How old?
You can apply, are you a senior? You look up on Young, that means, hold it for-
My husband is.
But you can try.
My husband is.
Okay, okay, I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I have sent out notices to the town departments that annual reports are requested and are due in our office by March thirteenth. So let's come and up-
Annual reports from all departments, gotta be in the office, ready to go to print by March the thirteenth. Is that a Monday?
That's a Thursday.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else?
Um, officially, along the lines of the annual reports, I will be seeking, um, printing quotes for the 2013, 2016 annual town reports from local printers, if anybody has any suggestions for me.
Well, my only suggestion is, I, I don't wanna see us talk out of sticking with the larger printing, the book. Last year, there was attempts to go back to the smaller book, and I think the consensus of opinion, everybody I talked to liked the bigger print, the bigger books. I'd like to see that continue with, uh, any, are you agreeing?
I have no problem.
Agree?
No, I agree.
Okay, all right. Since we have the majority of people in our town that are older people and wear glasses, right? I think we should stick with the bigger print. Thank you very much. Anything else?
Very last thing, gentlemen, is, uh, as everyone knows, the Worcester County Sheriff's Department, as part of their community service program, did some painting here in our Shepherd Municipal Building. Um, they've completed the majority of the offices on the first level. Um, they are scheduled to return in March to complete the remaining offices.
You know, I wish, when I had that group of people right back there, that, oh, I still got the whip, isn't it? You know, we oughta start, you go over to West Brookfield, they're supposed to have deep pockets over there, but you know, those people over there are constantly running fundraisers. They're adept at it, I mean, they, they're constantly doing something. I'd like to see that committee back there, because I know we don't have the money to spend, but, does anybody ever see that town sign out here coming into this, our main building in this town? We need something new to replace that sign, dress it up. There's a good, uh-
What sign do you cost them?
Uh, it says the Shepherd Building out here, you can't hardly read it unless you're within three feet of it.
See, you know where the road? Well, you know where it is, I don't need a sign.
Well, it's, you know, but hey, people coming to our town to look into whether they would like to move here or not, you know? Be nice.
When I retire.
You're retired?
No, when I retire.
I'd be a great project for fundraiser here in town somewhere, somewhere, do some, maybe I can think of something. We can have a dance-off or something, all right? Okay, anything else?
I'll ask that, gentlemen.
Mr. Delaske?
I have a couple of things. I went to the pre-construction meeting at the town all this morning. They're pretty well set on the, uh, you know, the way that they're gonna remediate downstairs is a bunch of bikes down there that the police are-
Can you hear?
Oh, barely.
You want me to yell?
Yes.
Clearly.
I'm not used to talking about, what are you talking about? I yell, my wife goes, I need to yell.
You went to meeting where they signed the contracts and remediating the downstairs and the police station. Now you're going, they got a lot of bicycles down there.
Look, a lot of bicycles down there, that are all contaminated with mold and asbestos mold.
Did you read that?
I did read that.
We gotta hold a town council to find out if we can get rid of the bicycles or, we can auction them, because they're gonna be covered with asbestos.
Right, you can't sell contaminated material in the county. It costs to clean them up, the police-
We can get rid of the bicycles.
What are they, police bicycles?
People abandoned bikes on the side of the road.
There are abandoned bicycles, the police-
Yeah. Bicycle, the people were found.
I guess the, what they're requesting to do is just put them in a junk, right?
Yeah.
Junk them. I, you have any problems with that, David? Junk them?
No.
I give a, you have any problems?
I don't, that's why-
All right, as far as I'm concerned, the board has the consensus to give the most legislation to junk the bicycles. Anything down there?
Um-
That's contaminated.
Yeah, yes, it all, it all announces, they're all announced, oh.
All right, okay. They have the, they have the, they have the expectation to junk anything that's contaminated. We're not selling contaminated material.
Um, we're gonna need a dumpster. Um, I called on one today, I could only find a fifteen yard, they wanted a thirty yard. Uh, Jen went said that he could pick it up and dump it and bring it back another one, so I don't know which way you wanna go.
Can I just ask a question? Can somebody go pick it up to scrap metal? No, it has to go in a dumpster?
If it's contaminated with asbestos, we can't give it anybody.
So it has to go in a dumpster? Isn't there a process-
Brian, you, you wanna subject the town to liability?
No, but is there, is there a process to put that in a dumpster? You just throw it in the dumpster? I mean, does it all have to be-
They take care of it.
The asbestos is baby people.
They'll be dressed and right, call in and-
Okay, I, okay, I'm just trying to-
We have a cost of the dumpster, but I think it comes out of the hundred fifty thousand.
They got other seats and rubber tires, I don't know.
All right, what, how much is our-
Who is monitoring that hundred fifty thousand?
That's all part of the remediation, that's not gonna-
That all upstairs.
Town council.
All right. The answer to this, you see Madden, see if there's money in that hundred fifty thousand dollar appropriation, and get the dumpster. Don't authorize any expenditure without going through there.
Well, you gotta go through there until the end of, until next week.
Yeah, she's gone.
Then you can't do it.
Okay.
Great.
Wait a minute. Do they need the bikes out of there in order to start this thing?
No.
Okay, if they did, I was gonna say come up with some way to start it.
Well, they're, they're talking, they were looking by money. But at any time, any time, they could put them in another section until-
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Delaske, excuse the interruption. Um, I did speak with the engineer, Mr. Devine, who confirmed that, uh, this project will start on schedule on Thursday.
Okay, I just wanted to start it, that's all.
All right, whether the bikes are removed or not?
Yeah, they'll move to another section, they'll move from here over to here, it's a lot of the way till they get the dumpster.
All right, when is Madden due back? Monday, Sunday, Monday? Oh, we can hold off, so then, I can have a dumpster here in a couple hours, once she, hey, I just wanted to check to make sure the money's there. If they've committed all the hundred fifty thousand dollars of what we, contacts we got in there now, then we're gonna have to find some other money and funding to get rid of the bikes. Let's see a rat. Get a rat on me, let's see a rat. Right? Thank you. Okay. Great?
And the third one is the cemetery is one, would like to get rid of surplus items, one of them being John Deere tractor. They have, um, a fifty-four inch claw blade with attachments. Um, they have a bow and deck, which we really don't need with the, the powerful unit, I could probably use that in parking wreck. And baggy system, I could probably use that in parking wreck.
Well, I entertain a motion to give the, all the surplus equipment to the Parks and Recreation Department to use it, if they can use it.
Well, we get into the same thing. The only thing we can do is give it to another department or junk it. We can't, we can't give it to anybody else other than the town department.
I have the, I have the other John Deere tractor, and I could probably use all of-
Well, then, take it all.
All right.
So with that, I'm done.
You make notation that the cemetery, John Deere tractor, went to Parks and Recreation for the record? Thank you. Mr. Delansky?
I have two things, very quickly. If you remember, we had Chris Dunphy in here, and we had an attachment here, is he looking for, uh, regional property assessment and reuse planning projects and so forth, and it has to do with distressed properties and everything else. And I brought up at the time, Mr. Fountain was, would be a good person to see if he'd be interested in putting that, putting on that committee, because he's interested in the town and what to do with certain things. I would move that if indeed people are, are amenable to it, that we appoint James Cordick and Jimmy Fountain to work with Chris Dunphy on the, uh, that particular regional property assessment reuse planning project.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second. Any discussion? You accept?
I do.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Come on.
And I have one other thing, and I'm glad you're sitting here, Jim. I would like to move that, uh, we appoint James Cordick to the Veterans Council, again, he's, he was in the service, he is interested in that whole thing, and we have basically turned the Memorial Day celebration and the Veterans Agent and so forth over to that committee, and I think Jimmy would be a super person on it.
Well, we've advertised for people, nobody else has come over. You got a motion? I got a motion, second. You are a skip?
Yes.
You're a tip? Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Jimmy, before you leave, I'll give you this paper, it explains, I have a resume for, for the Veterans Agent position, and I have a little bit of explanation on that particular project. So before you leave, I'll give that to you, and that's all I have.
I am nothing. I am nothing. Anybody here got a final word out there that we missed, overlooked anybody, don't want nobody to go home and, all right. Thank you very much, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, just so people know, and people understand, from now on, the board will be meeting on a weekly basis, unless something comes up and the chairman has the right to cancel, but we will be meeting every Tuesday from now on.
Sure?
Yeah. Michael Burrow again. Uh, just one quick question, um, 'cause I wasn't sure, we're from the corner respondents regarding my open meeting law complaint, if that was gonna be discussed or-
Say what?
The open meeting law complaint that's been served to the town.
We don't discuss it.
Oh.
We don't discuss it. You, you made a complaint to the Ethics Board.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
Well, right now, it's like you got a lawyer, we got a lawyer, okay?
Right.
So we wait to hear from the Ethics Board. They're the ones, the ball's in their court, we don't know about any official complaint, only what you said.
Right, right, but you got-
And we don't discuss that with you.
Oh, okay.
Now it's in the Ethics, you turn the case over to the Ethics Board. They act upon it.
Oh, okay, 'cause I did talk to them the other day, and they said that the town has fourteen days to respond back to the State Agency.
Have we got anything from the, the State yet?
Well, no, you wouldn't have got anything from the State, because I, I, I know it's kinda confusing. Basically, you're supposed to submit it to the town clerk and the board of selectmen, and then the board is supposed to review it, and then you're supposed to write a reply to me and carbon copy the State Agency on the provision of open meeting law. Did I talk to her this morning?
So you tried to trick me. You wanted me to answer a question, you knew the answer too, and you only wanted to have the answer.
Thank you, sir. Don't do that to the-
Can I say something? Let's do this.
Can I say something?
Yep.